Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Mike Islandusi, Jr., Bill Ferrario, Edwin Chase. Thank you. No call, please?
Mr. King?
Present.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McCandrew?
Present.
Mr. Smurl?
Here. The following five motions are being made to correct typographical errors in the first whereas clause of resolutions that were passed in seventh order at last week's council meeting.
I make a motion to correct resolution number 255 of 2025. It's the, in the first whereas clause, change the wording from Scranton Cultural Center to Scranton Fire Department.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to correct resolution 255, 2025, on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, and so move.
I make a motion to correct resolution number 256, 2025, in the first whereas clause, change the wording from University of Scranton to Steamtown Church.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to correct resolution 256, 2025, on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, so move.
I make a motion to correct resolution number 257, 2025, in the first whereas clause, change the wording from University of Scranton to Weston Park Baseball.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to correct resolution 257 of 2025, on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, so move.
I make a motion to correct resolution number 258, 2025, in the first whereas clause, change the wording from University of Scranton to Scranton Cultural Center.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to correct resolution number 258 of 2025, on the question.
On the question, just so everybody knows what we're doing, these are typo errors from the legal department that we have to correct on the floor. Just throwing it out there so everybody knows why we're doing this.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, so move.
I make a motion to correct resolution number 259, 2025, in the first whereas clause, change the wording from University of Scranton to Providence Pregnancy Center.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to correct resolution 259 of 2025, on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, so move.
Make a motion, take from the table, file to council number 91, 2025. Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to take from the table, file of council number 91 of 2025, and place it in seventh order for a final vote. This ordinance is the 2026 capital budget for which a public hearing was held last week. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, so move.
Make a motion, take from the table, file, council number 95, 2025.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to take from the table, file of council 95 of 2025, and place it in seventh order for a final vote. This ordinance authorizes entry-level employment in the police department. On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, and so move. If anyone would like to speak on either of these pieces of legislation, you may do so in fourth order, citizens' participation. Dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, correspondence dated September 25, 2025, from Thomas J. Anderson and Associates, Inc., regarding financial requirement and minimum municipal obligation, MMO, for the city of Scranton's pension plan for 2026. 3B, overtime report for all departments for September 2025, as provided by the city controller, and received September 24, 2025. 3C, correspondence received September 25, 2025, from City Business Administration, regarding other post-employment benefits trust, 2024 annual audit of financial statements.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not received, then filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I'll just have a quick one. I mean, it's not something that's upcoming. I just want to say that I was with my grandchildren, able to attend the touch-a-truck event that was at NAOG, that the Junior League of Scranton put on, and well-represented from the city was, you know, law enforcement vehicles, our police department, our fire department, DPW, EMTs. It was a great event, and they did a fantastic job. It gets bigger and better every year, and it was just a perfect day for it. So I applaud everyone who was involved with this.
Thank you, Mr. McCandrew. Anyone else?
I have a few. There's quite a few things going on this weekend. My family had also gone to the touch-a-truck event, and that's a great one that they have every year for the kids. But this upcoming weekend, a lot of things going on, a lot of fall festivals. Zumos is having their annual autumn festival, that's going to be Sunday at 1:00 p.m. And then there's going to be the Green Ridge Fall Festival this Saturday, starting at 10:00 a.m. on East Market Street. And over at NAOG Park, the Green House does their honeybee and harvest festival. Every year, that's going to be Sunday from 12:00 to 4:00. So, and then in addition to that, the Fringe Festival is still going on, so I'd encourage people to go to the shows or events for the Fringe Festival. There's plenty of things to do in the city this weekend. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Anyone else? Well, first Friday is this weekend, and City Hall is having an open house from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This is a piece of the slate from this roof, from the building, from 1988. We're going to have about 100 pieces of these or so out the front on a table.
1888.
1888. Yeah, that'd be a little young. So if anybody would like one, they will be out the front on a table, and you're welcome to them. You'll also be open, the building will be open, you can come through the entire building. There'll be staff here to show you any part of the building you'd like to go through, and all of the work that's been completed.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First, Joan Hodawanas.
Once again, I'd like to compliment the gentlemen I see every morning in their blue Scranton tomorrow t-shirts, pushing those humongous garbage cans around and cleaning up the sidewalks. I don't know if you ever walk around the downtown in the daytime, but it has made a definite difference in the look of the downtown. So I compliment them, they do an excellent job. And where do we stand on the 2024 audit?
It's complete. And there it is.
Where is it?
Did you hear my phone beep? It just got here.
You just got it?
Yes, I did.
So it will be on third order next week?
Oh, I believe so, yes.
Okay, that's good. Do you know when they signed it, when they dated it?
I believe.
Because the OPEB audit in third order was signed on August 25th, and it just appears now.
Yes, I believe this was actually completed yesterday, and so they had to take all of those pieces that were all over the place and combine them into one to finally get us one single document, and that took most of today.
Okay, well, at least it's done. And that's real progress. Speaking of progress or the lack thereof, do we have a DPW director?
I don't know of any being hired, no.
Going, going gone. I mean, can't be having an unemployment problem in Scranton if that position's still open. How about the negotiations for a new DPW collective bargaining agreement? Still working on it?
I believe so. Neither side will tell me any details, of course, so.
Oh, I understand that, but hopefully they'll get it done. It's been nine months since the old one expired, that's long enough to have a baby. With regard to item 8B, authorizing the entry-level employment of the police department, I'm very glad to see that you did look into the opinions of the Civil Service Commission and the police union. It was surprising that when the legislation was first introduced, there was no such information included in the backup. And this seems to be a recurring problem, that legislation comes forward, and a lot of questions are, you know, have to be asked and answered down the road. I'm not quite sure who prepares the backup for the legislation, but I compliment you for taking the time to table the legislation and do your due diligence before putting it up for a final vote. That is what you owe the police department, the police union, and the people of Scranton, so, good job. Over time, I see we're still plugging along. Parks and Rec is 110% and the fire department 112%. The overall total through, apparently, September is 87.8%, so hopefully that won't go too much higher. And the MMO is in for $9.7 million, so I don't know how many people ever come to or pay attention to the minutes of the consolidated pension board every month, but the fund's been doing well because the stock market's been doing well. So hopefully, we will have a good year so that we go into next year with no issues. And one last thing, the potential for a government shutdown. I mean, I've been out from the television for two hours. We're still heading towards a potential shutdown tonight? Anybody here differently?
No, I suppose, nothing.
I'm just curious as to, you know, what the local impacts are. I know that the Trolley Museum and the Steamtown, the railroad stuff will all be shut down effective, what, tomorrow?
Yes.
Because it's a national historic site. Any other impacts on either the economy or the city itself?
Well, the weekends, usually, the Trolley, they're pretty busy on the weekend, so, yeah, you're going to lose a lot of that.
Yeah, you know, I mean, it's just like the perfect storm. You've got a potential federal government shutdown, you've got a county with two commissioners who are determined to, you know, duke it out on the floor in front of the cameras. I mean, it's just going on and on and on, and I, you know, I mean, I hope we get through this year and into next year with all the i's dotted and the t's crossed. Thank you.
Just one question. How did you think of 6.25% interest?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
The 6.25% interest rate for the MMOs?
Oh, I think that, you mean the 6.4 percentage?
Yeah, 6.6 and 1/4, yeah.
Well, that's good.
That's what we close it at.
Yeah.
That's phenomenal, yeah.
You know, see, that means that, you know, we're hedging our bets, and we aren't overestimating how the stock market's going to perform, so we'll be healthy and we'll be able to pay our retirees what we promised them. That's a good thing.
It is a good thing. It's great.
Very good.
Thank you. Norma Jeffries?
Good evening, Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And today, it's all about me. The things that I've run into this past week, then I figure if I ran into these issues, then others have run into them as well. So I'm sure I'm not speaking just for myself, and I'm speaking for other residents of Scranton as well. One of the things, and I guess it's, Dr. Rothschild, when you spoke about the handicap parking in the city, and I know that you were following up on that, and since I've been having issues these past two years, you know, you don't really pay any attention to it until you need it. So as I'm downtown a lot, and I run into problems, you know, trying to find a place to park, and just because it doesn't have a license plate that has the handicap or the placard, because I know sometimes I forget to put my placard on it, but, you know, I was looking for an update on that because I know that you were working on that with the police department, so I was wondering if we could get an update on that as well. And the other thing that I ran into this week was household hazardous waste. I had a couple of things I needed to get rid of, and so I got on our website, and I Googled the hazardous waste, what do I do with it? I'm very conscious about recycling, so there's no way I was going to put it in the trash. So the website told me to go to the recycling center on Delaware Avenue. So off I go with my two little containers, and the first place I came to was metal, I guess, like steel and stuff, all the trucks were lined up there. I said, "Well, that's not it." So I kept going, and then I ran into the spot where they do the cardboard and the cans recycling. So I thought, "Okay, let me go in here." So I went in there and drove around, didn't see anybody to ask a question, like, "What do I do with the hazardous waste?" And it wasn't a lot, it was drain oil, but I didn't want to put it in the trash. So I didn't see anyone to ask about it, so I went back to my cellphone to look and see, maybe there was a telephone number I could call, to see what do we, the residents of Scranton, do with hazardous waste? Because I'm sure I'm not the only one. And I was hoping that somebody could tell me what to do with it, I'm still have it in my car. And the other thing that I got caught up in was the flooding on Olive Street and Capous Avenue. I was coming from the farmer's market, and it wasn't this last one, it was the one, the cycle, the rain before. And the sky just opened up, and that intersection became flooded within minutes. You know, fortunately, I wasn't in, and I was about two cars behind it, so we went up and took the left-up, one of those streets, which you couldn't get through, so we had to make a U-turn and come back down and go back out, but making our way through the streets so that I could get home. But then again, I guess it was last week, that same intersection was flooded again. I don't know who owns that, is it PennDOT or Y? You know, it's continuously flooded. So as I was looking as well, as I was turning around, the sidewalk there for the students coming from Scranton High is, has to be a hazard for those kids. And thank God that we've never heard of anyone getting hurt at that intersection there. You know, the sidewalks are so thin and narrow there, and I know that the brush has been taken care of there, but I don't know who's in charge of the streets there and the sidewalks because it is very, very narrow. And another thing, my final thing that I was thinking about was, coming up Lackawanna Avenue is still just such a hazard. I've had trouble with my tires, but it's nothing to do with Lackawanna Avenue. But as I come across Adams Avenue, and I come up by the Radisson, and that wall is still there crumbling, and I thought there was a grant and money had been allocated for that wall to be fixed. I don't see any kind of advancement going on there, so maybe someone can give me a little update on what's going on with that wall at the Radisson as we go forward. And that's all I have for tonight.
Norma, in 7th C tonight, you'll see that Lackawanna Avenue, the Streetscape project, that's part of the project, that should be approved tonight, and then it goes, the contractor's already been chosen and everything, so this just has to pass council, and then it begins.
I will be keeping my eye on it to see what it is.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Les Spindler?
Evening, Council, Les Spindler, city resident homeowner. Last week, I drove by Scranton High School at 3:00. Spoke about this many times, and people are still parking illegally there. There's signs, "No parking," and they park, and they're halfway out into the lane where peak traffic is, and nothing's being done. I mentioned it a bunch of times here, and it's still the same. I don't know why nothing is done with that. Yet, I get a ticket outside my house if I park facing the wrong direction, but nothing is done with these people parked illegally on Seventh Avenue. Next month will be three years since the DPW day shift supervisor was on my corner, spraying each corner, saying they're going to fix it. Well, to my surprise, last Monday, I get a knock on my front door, and it's that same supervisor. He said, "Mr. Spindler, we're here to fix your corner." He said, "Somebody called 311 and said they're getting water on their property." I said, "It wasn't me, I didn't call 311, but I said I've been going to council for the last three years, and you said you're going to fix our corner." He said, "Well, we're..." I said, "I already took care of it." I said, "I went up Lowe's and bought Blacktop, and I fixed the corner." He said, "Well, if you don't want us to do it, we won't do it." I said, "Well, if you want to do it, go do it." He said, "Well, you're going to have to have that car moved." So I had to call my daughter to move her car. Not only did they do the corner, they'd all, all the way to the end of my property. So I'm very thankful for that. It took three years, but at least they got it done. They did the corner, and like I said, all the way to the end of my, around the corner and down in front of my property. So now I have a nice curb there now, so I hope it lasts. But thank you to DPW, they did a good job. On September 17th, there was a story on Channel 16 News about ATVs, these e-bikes, scooters, the mayor from Hughesville was on. He said, "I didn't even know, it's a state law." It's not that, he said, "It's not a borough law, it's a state law. These vehicles are not allowed on the streets. No scooters, no e-bikes, no bicycles, especially not ATVs. And if they're caught, Clark Summit also, if they're caught, they confiscate their vehicles. That's what we should be doing here. We have to do something because it's just out of control. These vehicles are all over the place, it's a safety hazard. I know it's the policy of our police department, they won't chase them, but some police departments do. Back in July, I was coming home from the casino at 10:00 o'clock at night, it was a Thursday night because I go to the party on the patio, so I just turned onto 315 to go on 81, and I see two police cars coming south on 315, and they're chasing two ATVs. Now, I don't know what happened, if they caught them or what, but they were chasing the ATVs, so I guess some police departments, their policy is to chase them. So I think, maybe our police department should change their policy. I know they don't want to because of lawsuits, but something's got to be done. I know, I think there's an ordinance or something in the city, but if it's not being enforced, like, what good is it? We have to enforce these ordinances. I don't know what the ordinance says, but I've been told we have an ordinance to dealing with this stuff, but if we're not upholding ordinances, what good is having them? I mean, this is a safety issue. I'm not the only one that's been involved. I mean, I told the story about the ATV going down Main Avenue a while back, and if I hadn't moved, it would have crashed right into me. It's just out of control. One went by my house the other day, it was loud as hell, and they're going on two wheels. It's unbelievable, it's a safety issue, and something's got to be done. Whether we confiscate their vehicles or whatever, it's got to be enforced. Whether we need more patrols, and it's bad enough on the side streets, but they're going on main streets, they're going on the highways. 315 is a highway, that's, there were two ATVs on the highway, and the police were chasing them. I don't know what police department it was, you know, might have been Pittston or some of, I don't know. But something's got to be done, because somebody's going to get killed one of these days. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Hillman?
I know he means what he says, even if I disagree sometimes. Rosie had an appointment Friday at the mall, so I walked around a little bit. I walked past a bunch of empty stores in Wyoming to spruce, then I came back down Penn Avenue. It looked so bad. All this money, $7 million, just going to a handful of people in Lackawanna. The mayor has completely misled the people, saying it's grants for Scranton. It's grants for a handful that have these old buildings with historic value, they're paying little or no taxes, and they're being enriched by rentals. This is the Scranton I live in now. Nobody wants to admit it, but the parking increases year after year have destroyed downtown as it was maybe five, six years ago. Jimmy Cle once told me they need to get rid of the meters, the office, the truck they had, everything to do with it, and have free parking for the businesses. He was right, 100%. We're not getting nothing out of the parking, and it gave $2 million to save a bunch of greedy investors that should have been bankrupt. And I ask you to give word to see if we can get a free parking permits for handicapped people. Nobody gave a damn up there about it. You people don't have no feeling whatsoever for the people of this city. It's a shame what's going on, right under your noses. Any street you go down has been completely destroyed by utilities. Nobody cares. Unacceptable repairs everywhere. I don't... You need to take an interest in the people that are paying for everything, even if it's probably too late. Well, to change the subject, I'm trying to be... I can't stand Kelly. Again, his poison pen unnecessarily, for no real reason, repeatedly in his article about Caderell being incarcerated. This senseless dribble of his wasn't the least bit necessary, but to me, it infers his attitude, which is completely an un-Christian, unforgiving attitude, is against anyone that been incarcerated for whatever reason over the years. I guess we're all just jailbirds in his eyes. He needs to go back under that rock he came from. He needs to go back under that rock he came from. Cognetti is a failure. Don't vote for a failure again out there. Her policies have failed us. You people have failed us that she relies on. The whole administration has been anti-resident. I don't know, but I sure hope there's a big change come election time for the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Morgan?
The first thing I'd like to say here from this podium is that if there is a government shutdown, I think you have to lay that at the feet of the Democrats in the Congress and the Senate, because they want to increase spending by $1.4 trillion and want to waste a lot more money, and the country is just starting to turn itself around. But what I have today is that I'm hoping that the residents in the city of Scranton would have appealed their assessments. I'd also hope that there were a group of citizens in Scranton that started a class action on this. I haven't really paid too much attention to what other people do, because I usually do things for myself, but I'd just like to share some things with residents in the city. I own three houses in this city, and I just find the assessment to be the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen or heard of in my life. And how they hired this group, when you do a little research on it, I have no idea, but they're involved in a lot of litigation at this point, and they're not competent. But that doesn't surprise me, because I'm not sure the city's competent, or the county, or the people we elect, because they're not qualified to hold the positions they have, and they get elected, and they can't make changes to the government because they get elected to a position they don't know how to do. And then it's like on-the-job training, and the damage that comes to the residents is just horrendous. But I'd just like to say that, you know, they raised one of my property values by They increased another one by $171,000, and the last one, they increased by $226,000. Now, there's absolutely no basis for anything they've done, because they worked for a reassessment in Jackson County, Missouri. They hired them to come in and do all this stuff. The taxpayers there received assessments that were so unbelievably unexpected, it's funny, that the county didn't know what to do. They were in a class action, and the county now is claiming that the process was not properly managed, leading to significant property tax increases. And, you know, I really think that the residents in this city, I've only started this thing, so I mean, I don't have a lot of time to do research, because I work a lot, but I really think they need to sue the county and the elected officials, and they need to do a class action and sue this company, because they don't have people that go out and do these assessments. They use software. They have nobody in their office that knows a damn thing about assessments. You can't make this stuff up, okay? They use computer-assisted mass appraisals. They use a software system to do all of this stuff, so they have no idea what your house looks like, no idea what the condition of your house is, because I think all what happens is, the county calls them and says, "Well, look, you know, we really need $50 million. Can you come here and help us? And we'll pay you, let's say, $10 million to help us do that." So they hire a couple people, say, "Okay, we got you covered." Then, of course, you know, they go out and do all these make-believe assessments, and then the stupid and ignorant people that have been voting in this city all of my life, okay, they sit home and they don't do anything for themselves. So, look, and I can't tell you what's gonna happen here, because we're still doing ECTV. I don't think they know, their attorney knows what he's gonna do next either, or the Third Circuit, but it's all a mess, and you're all responsible for it, and people are being crushed, because we have incompetent government and people who won't do a damn thing to help themselves. They think somebody else is gonna help them. It's not gonna happen.
Thank you. That's all for our sign-in sheet. Would anyone else like to...
Good evening, Virgil Argenta, Scranton resident. First, I'd like to commend Bob Gattens and the SMRA Board and Volunteers, and that's the Scranton Municipal Rec Authority, and Mr. Smurl and his volunteers. Naug Park looks great, and it's a pleasure to visit. 8B, good luck with the lateral program. I think the lateral program will be very beneficial to the department. 7B, board members have recently voted against downtown developers who are working to revitalize the area, investing significant personal resources into these efforts. Most notably, 7B declined approval for a digital billboard proposed for the sidewall of Rocky's Lounge. My main concern with this board is the consistently low attendance of its members, which results in decisions being made by only a partial board without rescheduling meetings to ensure full participation. The project in question represented an investment close to $100,000. It included a comprehensive 20-page application, including work with local businesses who experienced lost opportunities due to the rejection. Although the board comprises of nine members, the decision to reject the project was reached with only a 3-0 vote. Those numbers seem to be the norm lately. The board was also involved in a situation that created challenges for another project being renovated by Mr. Basaliga, which included two vacant buildings on the 100th block of Wyoming Avenue. After the project commenced, a board member requested samples of both steel, brick, and exterior material to be used for this building. In construction, and Mr. Smurl, I mean, you can understand, it is standard practice to complete exterior work during favorable weather conditions, but due to these additional requests, the project's timeline was delayed. If this board is not fully capacity, it may be beneficial to consider extending some professional courtesy to the developers who are developing in the city and using their money. Until all members are present to make decisions, this approach can help ensure fairness to the professionals involved. As a resident and council candidate, supporter of city development, the hope is that any delays or rejections from the board are based solely on relevant qualifications, considerations, lack of board members' expertise, or knowledge, hopefully not of spite work. The city's website states Harb shall consist of nine residents of the city of Scranton as follows. This is who should be on the board for Harb. One registered architect, one registered engineer, one licensed contractor, one licensed real estate broker, one member of the Architectural Heritage Association, one property owner whose property is located within the historic district, or who owns a landmark property, one member who by professional training or occupation is an urban planner, architectural historian, archaeologist, historic preservationist, or has professional expertise in a field closely related to historic preservation or discipline, which has American society's, American civilization's culture, geographic, or cultural anthropology. One property owner at large, and one other person who by training, experience, or interest is qualified to carry out the duties as a member of this commission. The registered engineer is vacant. The architect's seat is vacant. The licensed contractor's seat is vacant. And the historic property owner is vacant. The seats that are filled are the Architectural Heritage Association, professional training, real estate broker, and a property owner at large and historian. And very rarely do you get the four of them to be at that same meeting. Will there be ADA accommodations for Friday's open house with the parking spot in the rear of the building? ADA requires parking space with adequate lighting, and that is from the ADA Handicap Accessible Manual. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doris Kolaszki, resident. Okay, first I want to make this announcement, that on Sunday, October 19th, there's going to be by a new group called the Friends of Naug Park, something going on at Naug, a step-up for Naug Park. It's gonna be a walk in the park, it starts at the amphitheater at 11:00, and if you come later, then you could just like hang out with the park. Okay, now I have to get to my stuff. Okay. First of all, they've never cut the curb on Olive and Colfax, which became a thing which dawned on me again when I walked my two dogs with my rollator and couldn't get down off the curb and had to walk around. Okay. I want to make sure I get everything in that I want. Okay, the parking meters for 7:00. Recently, I went to a meeting at the library that I had to be there for 6:00. I parked in front of Lackawanna College at the handicap meter. I went to the kiosk, it was a black screen, like it wasn't plugged in or something, it wouldn't work. I went to the next kiosk, and I couldn't get two different credit cards to work. And they were coming out of Lackawanna College, and two of the students tried my credit cards in case I was doing something wrong, which I knew I wasn't, and they wouldn't work. They only went as far as after you put the license number in, you couldn't pick anything more. And the coach came out, and he said, "Let me do my pandango for you." And I said, "Now it's 6:30, it's only a half hour to go. I'm not gonna worry about it, I don't want you to give me money," you know? So I want to know, what do you do if you've hit three kiosks in the block, and they're not working, that you have to keep going to another kiosk? I mean, it was ridiculous. It was 25 after 6:00 by the time I got into the meeting. And when I went to explain why I was late, half the people in the meeting that lived in Scranton did not know about the extended time, because they said, "Oh, my God, we didn't put anything in either." Okay, so that was that. So I want to know what you do if that's what happens. The code blue, since we're getting pretty close to that cold weather, I think it needs to be raised. I'm not sure what the temperature was, but I think it was almost freezing or below freezing.
20 degrees.
What is it?
20 degrees.
That's ridiculous. I mean, would you want to be out? I mean, even 45 is kind of cold, and we have kids, school-aged kids that are homeless now, just because of the high rentals and lost their things. They have to raise that. It's crazy. I mean, at least to 45. I would raise it to 50 at least, or 55, even higher, but I understand there's a problem getting volunteers for some of these places, so maybe the city needs to hire somebody or offer overtime to certain people that already work for the city to take care of them. I want to thank you guys for having the soras cleaned out by my house and everything, when we just had this big downpour. The only water that pooled was the water from the Geisinger parking lot across the street, because all the grass is gone and it couldn't catch, so, you know, it pools there. But the soras didn't overflow on my block. They smelled for a while, but that seems to have gone away. So I want to thank you guys for having that done. Oh, since you're all campaigners, and since I usually put up campaign signs, they're not so bad when they're cardboard, but those plastic ones, you can't get rid of the plastic, and nobody ever picks them back up. So I had like a whole bunch of the things that you put the signs over that you have to stick in your yard, and I put them in for recycling and found out that they're not recyclable. So they're still sitting alongside my house with, I have no idea what to do with them. Let me see here, there was another thing. Okay, the other, I have two things. The other thing that I have is when I heard on the TV when I watched this about the overgr... Oh, wait, you know what? I'm not gonna stay there, because I'm running out of time, and this is more important. My neighbor sent me pictures that she wanted me to bring in. I thanked them for cleaning up 421 Colfax in the front there, it's beautiful, but she sent me a bunch of pictures for the back of it, and she wanted me to bring them in. So I'm just gonna try and approach you if you don't mind, and there's six pictures. But you can just look at the scroll quickly. Baby, the back of the building, you guys did a great job, and the back of the building is actually clean up. It's hanging around all the painting that's either there or out of there, and of course they said you didn't, they are. And so that's the fire, and they can say either they were...
Mr. Voldemortk?
Yes, sir.
Can we reach out to Carpark and ask how many total kiosks we have, and right now, what is the, what percentage of those kiosks are operational, or 100% operational?
I'll ask them tomorrow.
Thank you. I do have an email out to them to speak with them as well, and if you could check on that while, if you get an answer before I do.
I will.
Thank you.
Can we also ask if what they've done to educate the public on the extended hours, aside from the news and media stories?
I will, Dr. Rocha.
Thank you.
Tom Coin Menucha. First, I heard about this supposed ARC meeting, and if it was a three, if they have a seven or a nine-person board, and they're voting 3 to 0, that doesn't sound to me like you have a quorum. If there's not a quorum, no business should be done at that. I'd be very interested in it to find out if this 3 to 0 vote is correct, and if it was moved forward on a 3 to 0 vote, if the action before you was actually a product of something moved forward when they didn't have authority as a quorum to actually operate and push anything forward. Stepping aside from that, the flooding. McDonough, between Cedar and Burning Avenue, the street along the side of it, near the curb section, has rolled up, pulled up like an onion ring, because instead of actually digging down property repaved streets, we skim coat and throw another layer on top. So the entire section, part of the section of the, near the curb, has just ripped up and washed down the roadway into an intersection. Obviously, when roadways get undercut, ripped up, and moved down, there's something seriously wrong about the paving in that section. Moving on from that, if you move down the street to McDonough and Collery at the park where we just put in pickleball courts, at the top of the hill, there is a storm drain that has no curb around it, and right up from it, there also is no curb on that street. So the water washes over the top, goes over where the storm drain is, and goes down a steep hill into the wooded woodchip area, washing out a lot of the woodchips from in the children's play area. And nothing says being fantastic than water-soaked woodchips for a long period of time, because they like to make mold and they like to dissolve. And they have to go back and actually get rakes and pull them back into the area, because they get washed out, because there's no curb on top, to properly take the water. There are drains, but the curbs, which are blacktop in that section, are gone. Moving down to the bottom of it, you have a porta potty. Moving down to the bottom of it, you have a porta potty. And that porta potty was actually a nice little fecal swamp, because in that section, they never bothered to grade it. At the back of the section, there's a new drain, there's waterways coming down, but on the section that goes against the city-side slope hill of it, the water isn't sloped away from there. So there was a gigantic puddle directly below the porta potty, sinking it under a good two feet of water. Nothing says caring about your children than saying, "Go over and play in raw sewage from a porta potty." The rain. Powell Court has been brought up here a number of times. At the end of Powell Court, which is between Bernie, which is between Bernie and Pittston Avenue back in Menucha, the one garage had five foot of water in it about four weeks ago. They got it pumped out, and it's back up again. If you go into the alleyway, the far storm drain, the equivalent of it is up here, while the road surface is down here. I'm sorry, but as far as I know, water does not go uphill to go into drains. When a drain is a good foot and a half to two feet above the water surface, it doesn't get in there. There's one at the other end of the block, which is all well and good, but since the old Aztec, Aztec building was put up, up there, and they clear-cut near 81 for parking up at Montage, that area, all that area is blacktopped. The water comes down, shoots down, has nowhere to go. Both Pittston Avenue and Bernie Avenue are high points. So it goes to that, goes into that section and then floods that entire back area. I don't understand why that can't be fixed. Though we had Pittston Avenue back there get paved, which is fantastic. The state paved it because the city's about to do a project to rip it up and put water control back there where the city paved it. Good working of money there by not coordinating. I have a lot more, including other questions, but I don't have time to do them. So on that, I guess I'll talk to you next week, and hopefully, we can stop, rather than building lights and sidewalks in Center City, we can turn to important things like people's houses not getting flooded. Thank you.
Good evening. Marie Schumacher, citizen of Scranton. I started off my day today with something I'd like to invite all of you to do, which is to come up to the East Mountain and walk around the, walk the path around the lake. It is, it's a very nice way to start the day, or maybe even to close out the day. So that's how I started. But I went from there down to my favorite scenic place on the East Mountain, which is the lookout. However, the lookout has problems. People are taking, taking stones out, and I guess we've got a quarry that must have a lot more because they continue, the DPW seems to be able to get them, to replace them, but that's going to come to an end sometime. But there was supposed to be a light there. I don't know if you could find it. I couldn't. I looked on both sides, at both ends, couldn't find a light. So I think we really need to do something there. And I think that is, yeah. That is, that is all, but the lookout needs help.
Can I just clarify something about the lookout? You mentioned that the stones were being taken again. Are you notice saying that more being moved than before? Like, has it changed? Is it worse, or is it still the same amount?
Depends on, depends on the week, what people did on the weekend, but.
Okay, so they've been moved recently that you've noticed?
It goes all the time, yeah.
Okay.
The DPW replaces them, they come and take them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Frank, can we request the administration to see if we can get the city engineer to go up there and look at the lookout and make some recommendations as to what repairs need to be done up there, and also inquire about lighting and possible cameras up there, if you could?
I will, sir.
It was my understanding that the engineer was going to go there, but I don't know if we ever received any response or further update on it.
But they did go there. Can we get, excuse me, can we get a report of what the plan is to ameliorate those issues there? Thank you.
We've got a brief update. The city engineer is still looking at it. I've been bringing this up for three years, and we had a solution, but it wasn't entertained. It would have been fixed already by the students at the CTC. So I don't know what the problem is, or the holdup, it's just, it's not making any sense. It's going to be another winter, and with this not being fixed, it's absurd.
Yes, thanks, everybody, for raising this concern. I did, some members of DPW that were stonemasons did reach out. They said that they believe that department could do the work, and we did get an answer a week or so ago from the city administration that said that those workers were busy on basins and they couldn't do that stonework. But can we get that, the city administration's recommendations for what we're going to do with that?
I'll find out.
Good evening, Scranton City Council. Mike Mancini, Scranton. Tonight, as we finish the month of September and council returning after a five-week break, apparently, nothing has changed, mediocre and crickets, unacceptable and disrespectful. With the current climate that the mayor has created, we need an effective city council to listen to those before them and answer questions or get answers. Instead, we elected five prepared statements. Last week's meeting lasted one hour and 12 minutes. Just prior to my five minutes last week, Mr. Schuster was given my questions in advance. As chair for Public Works, here were the questions on the minds of many Scranton residents and voters. Let's recap, shall we? Crosswalks are finally being painted with the wrong paint. Do you think DPW should keep that responsibility? Do you think the PA Water should become more responsible for their pave cuts and the city enforcing ordinances? Do you think city residents deserve their own pave cut inspectors? Do you believe DPW should be knocking down condemned and unsafe properties? Do you believe the blighted neighborhoods also cause crime? Do you think that an engineer should inspect the lower 100-year-old railroad bridges? Do you think the city would be better served with in-house engineer? Do you think the tree cutting should be done as a DPW function? You answered none of them. In an election year, wow, mediocre. Mr. Schuster, good luck with your project. Do each of you get the concept of what's required to be a good community leader, represent your city with pride? Week after week, many good and caring people do their part, speak their minds, just to be ignored. If no one showed, would that be a win for each of you? How would each of you justify being reelected after this type of representation? You could get questions answered with caucuses. The good people of Scranton would like to see a caucus with a pave cut inspectors. PA Water about the poor work ethic and quality. And the police chief about the nature of our calls. I'd also like to hear from the Lacoona County District Attorney. Mr. Brian Gallagher lives in Scranton. If possible, our city would like to hear how they interact with our police chief. We've had so many opioid-related deaths in Scranton, no one held responsible for their actions. We'd like to know if the changes to our police department are for the better. Our citizens deserve answers because the mayor, our amazing police department that works nonstop to protect us, should have those answers as well. Cannot place, we cannot place our police department in unwanted danger. Thank you to our Scranton police, who are short-staffed because of the changes in the police testing. As the president, the West Scranton Crime Watch, Mr. Schuster shut down the Crime Watch program right after slandering me. I will proceed on a day and time of my so choosing. Mr. Schuster, care less about our safety, our amazing police department, infrastructure, our roads, or our great DPW employees. On November 4th, proceed to the polls and vote for character. Those who pay attention and are willing to answer questions deserve your votes. Someone like Schuster and the mayor do not. Our city has become a stepping stone for someone who does not deserve it. This Friday, this very same building, Scranton City Hall, will have the extra set of doors unlocked from 6:00 until 8:00 p.m. It will be the first time in years. Come meet stepping stone Paige and her expansion team and watch the crowd go mild. I care about our city, care about our citizens, and show up here weekly to ask the important questions. For those who cannot attend these meetings, I operate on a different level. What draws me here weekly is crickets and mediocrity. Since it's all about Paige next week, Paige and her mediocre machine, stay tuned, and thank you for paying attention unlike those who represent us. Good evening, council.
Hi, I'm Rick Little, candidate on the top of the ballot in the upcoming local election. I think the local election is probably the most important thing to concentrate on for all the problems that everybody's having. As I've said for a long time, this county and this city have an unconstitutional governance. I think the evidence of that is a case, I believe it was from 1856, called Dillon, or called the Dillon Act, which was a case between the Clinton Railroad and somebody Clinton and Railroad. Anyway, that was the case that set up the legality of home rule charges. Now, 1856, that's only four years after the Republican Party was ever heard of, started, and just a few decades after Andrew Jackson started the Democrat Party. And the problem is in the judiciary, because these people run for the judiciary as Democrats and Republicans, and the newspaper never defines how it works. But this is definitely the biggest problem that America has. I really realized it going through the state family court system, because like marriage and like all domestic relations things, they are not for the federal government, you know? They are for the state. But the state and the county and the city have to adhere to constitutional standards, which is due process and the whole thing, the Bill of Rights. And it's all been mishmashed in all this talk about democracy, and it's not democracy. Democracy is the vote, and the elections are integral to every part of government, especially where I was just evicted from, Scranton Housing Authority. It's a voting farm. All the judges and inspectors are in there, and these are good jobs. I mean, you can make $8,000 if you're elected Board of Elections. You only have to collect like 10 elector signals, but they've been going for years like that, and the same people. And there's a certain pride in Scranton, Democrat pride. I mean, the first John F. Kennedy School was named here in 1963, and it's great, you know? I mean, I was a Democrat, and I was a Republican, now I'm an independent running on the AAA mission from God party local here in Scranton, because the powers-to-be have figured out the whole system of how it works, and the newspapers are part of it, part of that whole due process. The newspapers are a big part of the due process and the notice requirements in the law. We have to get local people in the judiciary talking here, because too many things are left to write to know and FOIA requests to find out what's going on. I hear tonight, they're having all these meetings, they don't have quorum, three people, they're supposed to be nine people. That's not a quorum. They were doing that at Scranton Housing Authority over and over, and it's happening in all the other boards, I can promise you that. They're talking about a government shutdown at midnight, October 1st, and this problem goes right up to the top, you know, Josh Shapiro, you know, closing down the government. There has to be a big change, and it's going to be an arduous task. It's going to be a couple of years tackling all the liberal globalist influence, not only in America, but all over the world. Every major European city, they're gone. And I don't want to see Scranton gone, and that's why I'm running for mayor, because I've seen, I've been to every agency, I see how it works, and I'd just like to emphasize that the judicial part of it, we cannot reelect the three big judges for retention, and we have to look at the judges in our local area.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fifth order, five A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Just a few comments. That curb that Doris has been asking about for the three and a half years I've been here, Colfax, it's Colfax and Vine, right?
Olive.
Olive, excuse me. Colfax and Olive. Can we contact DPW and find out what the status is of that? It's been asking for three and a half years.
I will, Mr. King. That's with both the city engineer and DPW, so I'll get a fix on it tomorrow.
We can do that. Also, if we could put a request into the Parking Authority, the group that runs the parking, about the situation where there's three broken kiosks, like, what are they supposed to do? How do they document? Like, if they get a ticket? I mean, they tried three different kiosks. They shouldn't get a ticket. And, you know, it's one thing for maybe a younger person that can bounce around to three or four different ones, but, I mean, elderly people trying to get around, and like, three's a lot, and they're not that close together, so if we could inquire about that.
I will, sir.
We talked about the lookout repairs, Pittston Avenue and Bernie, correct? The, or is it McDonough?
McDonough.
McDonough.
Yes, I was seeing Bernie.
McDonough between Bernie and Cedar. Can we ask our city engineer or DPW to go out and see what the issue is there that's causing that flooding?
That was not repaired because it's on the paving list, and it should be paved within the next two weeks.
Okay, all right.
Bernie to Cedar.
And then, I guess this one would be for our attorney or our solicitor. If we could look into the legality of a three-o vote on a nine-member board. I do see that the HARP board is seeking a contractor, an engineer, and historic property owner, so they're shy, presently shy, three members, which means they have six right now. But I would think if only two of us showed up here, we couldn't conduct business. No quorum, can't even start. No quorum, can't even start the meeting. So I don't know how they start a meeting with three members of a nine-member board. So if we could check into that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few comments tonight. The first thing on my list was going to be the audit. I did speak with Matt Dominus over the weekend, who said that we should be receiving it, so it appears that our President has received a copy?
Yes, I texted or emailed to you.
Okay, we'll get that tonight or tomorrow?
Yeah, they had just finished it when they sent it to me. It was like, we started the meeting.
Okay, all right. Thank you. We have item, well, item 6B on our agenda last week is now moved to seventh order. It was our police department hiring process. We did table it, so I'd like to thank everyone who tabled this to get a response. We did get a response from the Civil Service Commission. I'm just going to start off by saying this should have been in our backups all along. I think it would have eased our minds. But they do have a, they do have their next meeting October 7th. When they have that meeting, Mr. Gilbryd, if they end up, we're going to pass this tonight, and if they turn this down, has the city administration said that they're going to rescind the legislation?
They haven't said that to me.
Okay.
I haven't had that conversation.
Next, we did ask about, Mr. McCandrick brought it up last week, and I chimed in on it as well, about our Human Relations Committee, or Commission. And we did get a letter from, is that something you were going to cover? No?
We already had that.
We talked about, yeah, it was information that we had already had. That member of the Commission was inactive as of August, and it appears that maybe the Commission was recommending the removal at that time. But Mr. McCandrick brought it up last week, and there were several times over the last few years that Council has vetted board appointees, things that came to light for us that we brought up. And I would say at the time that that happened, we were treated foolishly, that if we were to vote this down, we were in the wrong. But with this appointment, for some reason, the newspaper and some of the media outlets have taken it and seen something, have some sort of an issue with it. But I would like to point out, in the past, when Council brought up the vetting process, we were treated as fools at that time. I did ask some questions about Kaiser Valley and if the residents that were affected by the flooding in Kaiser Valley have been contacted. Some of those neighbors have told me that they weren't, but the city administration answered my question stating that letters were sent and calls were made to all impacted homeowners. In regard to the brick grant, all Kaiser Valley homeowners participated in the buyout, participating in the buyout, attended a May 15 meeting and signed a refuse exoneration form. So I'll be checking up on that. And then I asked a question last week about the Serenti Center, about what is that building used for, and where are we at with some of the work that was being done there? The answer that I received back was that the classroom and evidence room, electrical and general construction work are complete in those areas, and the city continues to use that center for training for both police and fire. That is all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rathard, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. First, I just wanted to touch on the curb cut issue at Olive and Colfax, which I had brought up many times, especially over the past year. And I look back in my email, the last thing that I had from Mr. Waldenberg was back on July 1st, and he had informed me that Riley Associates had completed the design and the project would be scheduled. So there's a design, but I'm not sure why the holdup, why it hadn't gotten scheduled or completed. So we will press them again to find out when that could be scheduled, and fingers crossed it could be done before the wintertime, because I don't think a curb cut should be a large project by any means. So that's, that I have on that. And then a couple of responses I have received from last week, and I know it came up tonight too, as a question regarding the Code Blue shelter. So last week I had asked what our plans were for the Code Blue shelter since Keystone Mission had closed, and they are the ones who are helping us to operate that during the wintertime. And the administration's response was that the city is actively engaging with our partners to enter into an agreement with a new organization that will fulfill the role Keystone Mission used to occupy regarding Code Blue. We are holding meetings both internally and with other community stakeholders to make sure our unsheltered population is taken care of during periods when Code Blue is declared. So I know one of the speakers asked if the temperature could be increased for when Code Blue even opens, but I'm worried about us getting someone to cover that. And I know that Parks and Rec workers do work overtime to open up the shelter on those nights that it's open. So there's, so you'll see like the overtime increase in budget during that period of time as a result. So people already do work overtime, but they wanted, you know, qualified persons to run the Code Blue, to stay overnight with the people. And in the past, I've had many people ask about if they could volunteer to do so, just as a member of the public, and there seem to be some more requirements that they wanted of people, aside from just volunteers, which I think it's appreciative, appreciated that people would want to volunteer to do that. So I'll continue to update the public on any further responses I receive on that, but I'm certainly concerned about it too, and want to make sure that we have that set up. So there's one other thing. I received a response, I had some questions last week about Connel Park and just about like our trash pickup in the parks in the city in general. And I was told that the city's park staff maintains Connel Park three days during the week, including Fridays and Mondays for weekend cleanup. They have installed additional trash receptacles in the park to encourage residents to clean up after themselves. So I've gotten a couple of people contacting me about this, saying that they do in fact help to clean up the parks and the neighborhoods. And I don't want anyone to think that, that I don't appreciate that from our residents, and that there are residents who genuinely care about our city and making sure that we have a clean appearance. And I know we have wonderful volunteers in a lot of our parks throughout the cities, throughout the city. So I don't want anyone to think that I wasn't recognizing the people that do that. And I've helped in a lot of cleanups in the past too, and I have no problem picking up trash or litter. And my daughter follows in my footsteps, because she always gets concerned when she sees litter around and will let me know, and we'll pick it up together. So it is certainly, you know, a community effort, and I don't expect Parks and Rec to do all of that, but I do think it's under their job description to do that in our parks instead of not just emptying out the trash receptacles, but then also picking up any other trash around it. And I think my biggest concern, and even over the past few weeks with what I've been mentioning about the parks that we've been to, is making sure that we're maintaining them, because we have put a lot of money into our city's parks over the past few years and with ARPA dollars. And I don't want, I'm already seeing a few years later, things deteriorating in our parks with equipment. So that's concerning to me, and I want to make sure all that money that we put in, that it was a good investment, and that kids and families and people are going to get a lot of use out of our parks for years to come without us having to put all that money in again so soon. So that's where that's coming from, me. So that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rathard. Mr. McCandrick, do you have any motions or comments?
Couple, so I know we're always still talking about stormwater and storm drains, and it seems to be a hot topic. Like, oh, sorry. Okay, so stormwater, storm drains, hot topic. We're talking about it all the time, and it's an issue. We all realize it's an issue. So I got, someone reached out to me in Manuka, and his concern is that the 3200 block of Cedar Avenue does not have stormwater catch basins, period. Okay? So rainwater collected by the street spills onto a property on the west side of the street. Subsequently, the runoff floods the Oak Avenue properties. Generally, the following exists. The contributing factors include street elevation above property, no catch basins, lack of curbing, and sidewalks and driveways. Currently, the resident of Oak Avenue are the stormwater managers of Cedar Avenue. But unfortunately, it appears to me that they're losing this battle. So, you know, they're trying to take it upon themselves, which they probably, you know, it's admirable, but they shouldn't have to. When I was younger, it was a challenge, but now it's a burden. I get that. I was watching Council meetings, and I'd like for you to bring this up. So please have, and I have, I don't know if I, no, I'm sorry, I don't have pictures for this, but could you please, Mr. Waldenberg, you know, reach out to administration, make them aware or alert them to the fact that, you know, there's an issue there. I don't know if it's part of the overall plan. I don't know. But if it isn't, it probably should be, since we're going to do this once. Some of these areas we might have to rethink are in worse shape than others, or they contribute to others. So we have to take a look at it, okay? And then, Mr. King, I know addressed McDonough and Collery, Mr. Coyne brought up, but when I heard about the porta potty, you know, with regards to, you know, submerged in water and containing fecal matter, that's near a park, that scares me. Or in the park even scares me more, because fecal matter contain, or potentially contain hemorrhat, you know, e. coli, which for the most part is hemorrhagic colitis. Just those two words together knows what happens when you come in contact with this. And especially kids with developing immune systems might not fare well with this. Some die because of e. coli. So this is just basic sanitation, basic safety. Let's keep our eye on that. Let's definitely make everyone in the administration aware of that.
I will, sir.
All right. Also, this was also brought to my attention. So everybody knows about the crosswalks all over the city, right? And, you know, they're here, and some people are, they're thrilled with them. So, but here's an example. I don't know during that whole process, or when that project was putting together, if there was any what-ifs taken in consideration. And one what-if being the intersection of East Gibson and North Webster Avenue. This gentleman states, "My neighborhood, and we've had an influx of small children, and a safety concern for me, it's bad enough people blow through that stop sign like it's not even there." But I think the crosswalks that were painted there make a big difference. And he was thrilled, but guess what happened? Utility company came and dug it up, right at that intersection. I have pictures for it, so I don't know. And, you know, I looked on PennDOT's website, who's responsible, whether, you know, if it's a state road or a city road, or even if the utility companies do municipal work, whose responsibility and how much of a responsibility, when they resurface or repair or do a pave cut, what's their responsibility? And it's unclear to me, and I saw some articles where, you know, or some pieces where they're not responsible, unless there's an agreement with engineers. And, you know, there's criteria, and there's this, and there's the Department of Transportation's recommendation. So what I would like to know is, you know, since these, and I know this company, very expensive company, came in and did the work, and they're probably gone, which, whatever, half, almost half a million dollars, but what, and I don't want a back and forth with inquiries, you know, what are we going to do? So what I do want is this one repaired as soon as possible. I know that we have very capable and talented people in DPW that used to do this and still do it. So, but I also want to know from the city engineer, what is exactly the process, or what's his understanding, since he's our pave cut expert now per se? Because like I said, I reached out to the state, I looked on my own, nothing's very clear, but I hope during this whole project, this was a thought process, what happens when we dig them up? Because it's already too late. We know there's horrible communication between the utility companies, and this happens all the time, where, you know, they start paving streets, digging them up. But right now, for the most part, I'm concerned about the crosswalks, because this resident is, and brought it to my attention, so, and I'm concerned about it too. So, you know, instead of going any longer, I just want to know what the plan is when this happens. Because I'm hearing, since I got this inquiry, that it's happened more than once throughout the city. So where, you know, there's a freshly painted crosswalk, and it's being dug up, and then it's not, it's no longer a crosswalk if the majority of it's gone. So I'd like to know, and like I said, I don't want to be back and forth, you know, with dialogue. I like to see this fixed, if they please go out and fix it, remedy this and any other ones that they're aware of. And then, just an explanation, or what the plan is for this.
I'll take care of it.
Because we did do, we amended the pave cut legislation, the ordinance, right? Maybe when these utility companies have to pull a permit or fill out that permit, that this is somewhere stated in there. You know, if they encounter or dig up any crosswalks, because they're everywhere, or any lines that, you know, will affect the safety of traffic, that that's part of the responsibility. I don't think it's a big deal. I don't think it'll cost much. And I know because if it's not language there, they're not going to do it, and I get that. So please, I know I threw a lot at you, but if you'd please, you know?
I may go, and I'll take care of it.
Thank you very much. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McCandrick. I have a few things from our finance meeting that was held September 24th. The year-to-date interest earned on taxpayer dollars as of this morning just broke $700,000. And another thing that stood out down there was our health insurance for all of departments. It looks like it's going to be above average, and it looks like it's going to go over budget for all departments. And it's because of the prescription costs and the dramatic increase in our prescriptions. So that is a big concern. We're already looking for options for next year to see what we can do about that. Next is our audit. It's done, and there were zero findings. So thanks to Eileen Cipriani, Matt Dominus, Andy Marichik, Adam Joyce, Jimmy Greenfield, Sherry Frabel, Melissa Sattlemeyer, Tom Rainey, and Attorney Jessica Escri. This is the first time that I know a minimum of 20 years that our audit is in on time. So I believe that is a huge thing to see finally get done, and these people did a great job, and I want to thank them for it. And the other thing I have is our statement of financial interest for anybody on boards or anything in the city of Scranton. This is taken care of by City Council Office, and we keep track of them. We were contacted by the Chairman on the Ethics Board. He will be in to review these. Now, we are 62 short. If you're on a board or a commission, you are not allowed to participate if you do not have this in. So, Mr. Waldenberg, will you send us to the Lot Department tomorrow, these names, and request that either they put them in or move along?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Any on the Harp Board?
All right. I believe that's, oh, the data center. I've got mail, but no return address, so I'll answer your question. Non-disclosure forms, no, I have not signed any to hide anything from the public that I know of plans of something to be built in the city of Scranton. I know none of that. I have never signed a non-disclosure form, nor would I ever sign it. So, and I don't believe anybody else from Council has. So I hope you're watching, or that's your answer, because I don't have an address for you. All right? Thank you.
5B for introduction to resolution, authorizing the Mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with RLE Enterprises to perform services for the North Scranton, North Main Avenue Stormwater Project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its At this time, entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So move.
Have a second? Second. On the question?
Second.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it, and so move.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, filed to council number 96, 2025, in ordinance, repealing outdated provisions regarding the city's paving of streets.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it, so move.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption, resolution number 263, 2025, donating a historical chair to the Lackawanna Historical Society.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 264, 2025, accepting the recommendation of the Historic Architectural Review Board and denying the certificate of appropriateness for the installation of a digital billboard located at 141 Jefferson Avenue.
I make a motion to table item 7B since the hearing was postponed.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to table item 7B. On the question?
On the question, once again, I realize we're tabling this, and that's probably a good thing. I just would like to know the legality of three people voting to make this recommendation when it's a nine-member board before I vote on this going forward.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it, so move.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption, resolution number 265, 2025, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Multiscape Inc. to perform construction services for the Lackawanna Avenue Streetscape Project.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I hope this is the final piece that's gonna get this project moving forward, to get that wall on Lackawanna Avenue, that project started. That is needed.
Tabled for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, filed to council number 91, 2025, approving and accepting the city of Scranton capital budget, which includes a capital reserve fund spending plan for the fiscal year 2026 pursuant to section 904 of the city's Home Rule Charter and filed to council number 11 of 2024.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for this Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'd like to make a friendly amendment in, on page 12, paragraph 2, under Engine 10 Building. The last sentence ends with projects, period. If we could just add the sentence, "Engine 10 shall remain in its current location on East Mountain."
Second.
Okay, so we have an amendment and a second on the question? All right, we will vote on it. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. Now we will vote on 7D. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
As amended.
7E previously tabled for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, filed to council number 95, 2025, authorizing entry-level employment in the police department without competition under certain conditions affecting public safety.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'm thrilled to support this. It's gonna allow our police department to get up to full capacity so that we have a full complement of police officers on the street, taking some stress off some of our existing officers who are, you know, putting in overtime and what have you, to try to make sure that our, our city is safe. This, we, we funded, I believe, 152 positions, and we're shy right now of probably about seven or eight. So this will help eliminate having to wait that 18-month process. And all these officers that are gonna be appointed will have the proper certification, Act 120 certification, so happy to support this.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anyone else on the?
Also, on the question, I'd like to thank council for, you know, voting to table this so we can get an answer from the Civil Service Commission. I'd like to thank Solicitor Gilbride for reaching out and getting us that answer from the Civil Service Commission. It helps us to, to make a decision. As I said earlier in the meeting, it would have been nice if that was sent to council originally. I think maybe it would have eliminated some of those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Anyone else?
Yes, so I'm happy with this process, this lateral move process, and, and it's needed, you know, for, for manning numbers and staffing, and because we struggle with it, and the public needs as many police as we can put in the, on the streets, or, so I'm happy with this. And I'm also happy that we paused, right? And because we weren't sure, and it was a point of contention that was, hey, was, was the members of the Civic, Civil Service Commission, you know, were they involved in the process? Did they embrace this process? So I wanted to also thank my colleagues here for, you know, taking the pause. I also wanna thank Solicitor Gilbride for reaching out, and we got somewhat of a legal opinion, all right? My understanding, they still have to meet to really give us a formal one, and they have to meet after we approve this. So my understanding, you know, this piece of paper, maybe it not be an official legal opinion, but, but it's a blessing from them, so, so we'll take it at, at that. And if any, for any reason this goes sideways, we have the power to change it and fix it, and we will. So I'm very happy to vote for this. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McCandrick. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, filed to council number 91, 2025.
This ordinance was taken from the table this evening and placed in seventh order for a final vote.
8B filed to council number 95, 2025.
This ordinance was taken from the table this evening and placed in seventh order for a final vote. If there's no further business, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.